For September 8th, 2020 will please come to order. This evening, we will continue to operate under some modified procedures. As ordered by Governor Holcomb in his executive order, we still are encouraging those in attendance to wear face masks in City Hall unless they're able to socially distance, which we're able to do here at the dais. We do have some limited attendees, so if you would do us a favor and please check to make sure that your cellphone is on mute or silent, and don't feel bad if you forgot to do it because that will put you in good company with all the rest of us from time to time. For those who are participating remotely, members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing or opportunity for comment. At the appropriate point in the meeting, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of making comments, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing the comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank you for your cooperation. And at this time, we would ask everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and remembrance of the more than 190,000 Americans who have lost their lives as the result of COVID-19.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of August 17th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President, we have an appeal number 2020-43. This is to the Mishawaka Common Council. This is a use variance to allow microblading inside existing Roots Salon at 3602 Grape Road, Suite 11. This appeal is signed by JV and Susan Peacock. Petition number 2020-18 to the Mishawaka Common Council. This is to rezone from C1 General Commercial District to C4 Auto-Oriented Commercial for an auto sales at 4211 North Grape Road. This is signed by Peter Augustino, who is the attorney for the petitioner. Petition number 2020-19 to the Mishawaka Common Council. This is a petition for Deer Run PUD Amendment to permit I-1 light industrial uses in vacant property at the southwest corner of Deer Run Drive and Fur Road. This is signed by Bonnie LaFrie Suter. Petition number 2020-20, this is to the Mishawaka Common Council. This is an annexation and rezoning for a proposed multifamily townhouse development at 15165, 15195, and 15201 Cleveland Road. This petition is signed by Gary Graham.
Thank you. We have no reports of special committees this evening, nor any ordinance on first reading, nor any resolutions, so we will move into ordinances on second reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number 2020-24, and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. I do have a letter from the petitioner requesting postponement.
Thank you. Mr. Compton?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we honor the petitioner's request and postpone this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to postpone the public, second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-24 indefinitely at the request of the petitioner. Are there any questions or comments? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
9-0, the postponement passes.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-25, and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from R1 Single Family Residential to C3 City-Center Commercial, 619 Lincoln Way East.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, a committee on land use planning to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 20-25 reports that they have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes 9-0.
Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2020-25. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, who is physically present in the chambers, if you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mike Portalese, 434 Calhoun in Mishawaka. I am the personal representative-executor for the state of my uncle Tony Portalese, who passed away in March, and we are preparing to sell the homes, and we'd like to have them zoned properly to do so, and this is at the recommendation of the planning committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Portalese? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi, Mike, how are you?
Good, Kate, how are you?
Good. I just had a question, and maybe you don't know the answer, but do you know why the request is to have it zoned City Center Commercial as opposed to R2?
I can tell you what I know. I may not have the whole answer, but what I'm told, that was the recommendation when I submitted it, that the house is around it already, C3, so it just blends in with the rest of the neighborhood, and plus it's so close to town. I had originally requested R whatever, and they suggested C3.
Okay. I guess one of my questions is, my understanding of our commercial district was that it ended at Cedar Street, so that, you know, the city center ended at Cedar Street, so that's pulling the commercial district closer to, you know, pretty heavily residential areas, even with the city hall there, so that's probably a question for somebody else, but thank you so much.
Sorry.
Okay.
I didn't know when I looked at the zoning map, it was C3 all around it.
Thanks.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Other questions for the petitioner? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else present in the chambers who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, anyone who is participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to, or please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, anyone wishes...
Mr. President?
Oh, excuse me.
I, Ken Prince, City Planner, if you have...
Excuse me? I believe we lost Mr. Prince again.
Shoot.
It was just like today.
I was kind of hoping that he would chime in on this.
Yeah, because I think the city center goes down to Mayor Field.
They could have chosen R3 category. The C3 was a better fit.
Mr. Prince, if I could be rude, you cut out on us, so if you made some comments earlier than that, you may want to repeat them.
My apologies, Mr. President. I'm remote from outside Philadelphia right now.
Okay.
So what I was saying was, the property is adjacent to C3 City Center, both to the west and then to the south is City Hall. We recommend it in favor of C3 versus R3 because it has a higher architectural standard if the property were ever to be redeveloped.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
No, that makes sense. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken. All right. Then I will once again ask for anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9-0.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-26, and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two-Family Residential, 613 West Third Street.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 20-26 reports that they have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, it should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for acceptance.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, then I'll call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes 9-0.
Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2020-26. Anyone who is present with us who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Portalese of 434 Calhoun in Mishawaka, again acting on the, as the executor of the estate for Tony Portalese. This is a house that's a duplex and has been for as long as I can remember, and once again, we're just bringing it in line with its use.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Portalese? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who is physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward? Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record? Hearing no one, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward? And then we will move to opening the floor to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance but who is participating remotely. If you would, please unmute your microphone. Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Evans?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just have concerns about having single-family areas going into R2 and that, and multifamily, and especially in my district, we have so many of them that are converting over to that, and I've had residents contact me concerning about, they really don't want more and more R2 in the, in the community, and that, and so, nothing against you or your family, but I have to take consideration of my constituents in that, so we're not in favor of it. And again, it's nothing personal, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Compton?
This is kind of a comment directed to, to play off Mr. Emmons' comment, and, Mr. Evans, I'm looking at a picture of this neighborhood, and there is a duplex right next door that was built to be a duplex. There are others in that neighborhood that are built to be duplexes. I understand your comment, and rentals in Mishawaka concern me, but is this the right one to, to be concerned about?
I, I can't say whether it's the right one or not, but the neighbors are concerned about it.
About this particular one?
About, all of them that have, we've had a number of them come up recently, and especially in my area.
I understand.
And they're concerned about that, you know, about the rentals and that coming into the west end, and so I listen to their concerns, and I'm only one person, but I do represent these people.
No, I understand.
And when they have a concern, I listen and I take their voice seriously.
Sure.
And like I say, it's, it's nothing against Mr. Portalese and that, but it's a concern of the residents in that area.
Okay. I may. Mr. Portalese, could, could you tell me if there is a sale pending on this?
Now, Mr. Portalese, if you could come forward to the podium, please?
Yes.
No, we have not listed the house until the zoning was correct.
So it is not listed, okay.
It is not listed yet, no.
Thank you.
May I respond to Mr. Evans?
If Mr. Emmons wants to ask a question of you, yes, but it's up to the pleasure of the council whether they want to inquire. Would you like to hear some further comments from Mr. Portalese, Mr. Evans?
No, no.
No, thank you.
Is there anyone else who has any questions for Mr. Portalese?
I don't have a question. May I make a comment?
Mrs. Volker, yes, please.
So, in looking at this particular house and looking at the documentation, this has been used as a duplex, duplex since 1953, so, I mean, it's, it's a long time historic, historically used as a duplex, so it's not one of the situations where people are coming in and buying, you know, single-family homes and cutting them up. It's something that's been used historically that way. The other thing that I see is plenty of parking for two families. There's plenty of parking on the street, and there's a garage and a nice driveway, so to me, it looks like it's a well-maintained property that has been historically used for, what, 70 years as duplex, and so I'll support the rezoning.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Are there any other council members who wish to speak? I would, and I guess since I feel bad, I'll ask Mr. Portalese if he has anything else that he wants to share with us by coming forward to the podium. Thank you, sir. Well, and I appreciate Mr. Emmens' concerns, I think we all do, and I appreciate his passion and his advocacy for the residents of the first district, and I also am concerned about our housing stock and what appears to be the proliferation of rental properties at times in certain neighborhoods, but I agree with, on balance, I agree with Mr. Compton and Mrs. Volker's point, that if you look at the historical track record here with regard to the use of this property, it has been a multifamily use for many years. I also distinguish it from some of the other petitions that we've been presented with in the past, insomuch as, we don't have any evidence in the record that there have been any code enforcement violations. I agree with Mrs. Volker that this is a property that's set up to be able to allow for parking and other amenities for a multifamily residence as opposed to others that we have seen. So while it's an issue that we need to keep an eye on, and quite frankly, it may be an issue that warrants some further discussion in and of itself at another time fairly quickly here, and I respect Mr. Emmens' opinion, but I will be voting in favor of this proposed ordinance this evening. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, then I call, will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
No.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-27, and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is PUD Amendment to allow assisted living facility at the northwest corner of Deer Run Drive and Fur Road.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 20-27, reports that they have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes 9-0.
Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2020-27. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, who is physically present, if you would, please come forward to the podium and begin with your name and address for the record. Good evening, Mr. Lang.
My name is Terry Lang from Lang Feeny and Associates. Our address is 715 South Michigan Street in South Bend. We represent the petitioner and the contingent purchaser of the property. We are proposing to put a assisted living facility at that northwest corner. We've met with the planning staff, and all of the recommendations that they have asked of us, we're in agreement with, will comply with. If you have any questions with regards to the proposed facility, the contingent purchasers are here also that can answer questions on the day-to-day operation that's going to be proposed there also, but with regards to the site plan used or anything like that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Lang? Thank you, sir. Anyone else who is physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium.
My name is Anthony Pericini. Address is 633 Windy Cove Court, Mishawaka, Indiana. I work with John Pericini as his license assistant at Cobble Banker, and we have been working with the buyers and representing them. All of them are in the medical field, and as Mr. Lang said, that they are questioned, they are here present if you have any questions. They have met with Ken Prince back in February and patiently waited because of the whole COVID situation to proceed on this project. They are very committed and excited about this project. Their facilities focus on more of a personal style of assisted living. They have a much better patient-to-care ratio than other assisted living facilities. We have unanimous approval from the Plan Commission and staff approval, as you know, and again, if there's any questions, they are here to answer those for you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Pericini? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward? Seeing no one, if there is anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please unmute your microphone. Hearing no one, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I would really like to hear a little bit of information about the assisted living facility from the purchaser, what makes it different from the other assisted living facilities, of which there are many in our area, so if there's somebody here that could address that, that would be terrific.
My name is Ramon Fernandez. We're, we live in 51969 Lake North Court in Grazer. We, I'm a, I'm a physical therapist by background. My partner is Dr. Vasquale and also Mayor DeTari. We're proposing to build like an, an assisted living, but this is more, we provide more personalized and more attentive care because our facility will be smaller. It's not this big back facility that they have like 50 or 100 units. Our facility will just be 20 units, and then our patient care, I mean, we are focused more on the personalized because we, we provide more caregivers, so, so instead of most assisted living, big back facility, probably they have like, per, per caregiver, they might have like 20 or 15. Our goes to have one, is to five, so per giver, we have five residents that, you know, we can attentively take care of them.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Please, Mrs. Volker, you still have the floor.
Thank you. So, it's nice to meet you. So I'm just curious about, are these, I'm assuming that these are, this is a private pay facility?
Yes, and we also, there gonna be some long-term care insurance that will be accepted.
Okay, and Medicare?
No.
Okay, so are you planning on providing, as a physician, as a physical therapist, are you planning on providing physical therapy services to, you know...
We will be, you know, the, it's up to the residents in our, basically, this is like their home, so if they need physical therapy through home health agencies, they have, they're free to, you know, get somebody. If they need hospice care, hospice companies can come and, you know, provide care to the residents.
But you wouldn't personally be...
No.
Okay.
We're not planning to do that.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir. Are there any other council members who wish to speak? If not, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9-0. Proposed ordinance number 2020-28, and ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, and providing zoning classification therefor. This is to annex adjacent, adjacent property to be included in a subdivision at the south and east of 1141 and 1241 East 12th Street. This is a public hearing with no vote.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into a public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-28 per state law. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Terry Lang from Lang Feeny and Associates. The petition, address is 715 South Michigan Street in South Bend. The petition for annexation here is to clear up a couple of parcels that probably should have been annexed several years ago when an addition was done to the, one of the buildings there. Now there's a proposed new addition merging the two buildings together. We've got part of it in the city, part of it in the county, and it creates a mess from the planning perspective. And it was best just to annex all of it into the city, do a subdivision merging all of it into one parcel, which will make it a lot easier from the tax perspective also for the owner on that. So the petition before you is to kind of clean up some stuff altogether and to allow them to do a building expansion there and add additional jobs to the city of Mishawaka.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lang? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium, or in this case, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? Thank you. We will then close the public hearing on this proposed ordinance. We will take final action and vote at a subsequent council meeting.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-29 and ordinance amending chapter 137 of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is grand view PUD amendment to allow dumpster enclosures in the 25-foot setback only if the gate is not visible from Gumwood or State Route 23, Cleveland Road.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 20-29, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Is there any further discussion? If not, then I'll call for a question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes nine to zero.
Thank you. We will now move into the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-29. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hello. Good evening. This is Jordan Wyatt with Evan Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, representing the petitioner, Great Lakes Capital. The petition before you is to allow a dumpster to serve the Bar Louis as part of the Grand View Phase Two development. When this was originally brought before you, Bar Louis was not the tenant that was intended to go in there. But after the restaurant moved in there, the dumpster was needed to help handle the additional waste of the restaurant. So we understand the intent of the original ordinance, which is why we are proposing like a higher quality.
Sir, if I could interrupt you, I'm having some trouble hearing you. Could you up your volume a little bit?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. But what I was saying is, yes, we understand the intent of the ordinance, which is why we're proposing that the dumpster be allowed to go there only if you can't see the gate. The dumpster was also have really quality architectural materials and style, brick and cedar to help it blend in with the existing buildings that are there, as well as additional landscaping. And as you might have saw in the before and after renderings that we provided, it blends in very effectively as those renderings were a street view from looking into the site there. And I ask for your favorable vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Wyatt. I just have, I think that the design that you have come up with is a good design, a good layout. I just, my basic question is, why are you putting it at the front as opposed to the backside of Bar Louis?
So working with the trash company that's going to be picking it up, this was the best layout to avoid conflicts with the users of the site and the restaurant and the trash trucks coming in to get that, which is why it's located where it is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Wyatt, on this dumpster, is it going to be set on concrete? Or is it going to be set on just the base of the ground or what it's going to be set on? What is the foundation of this dumpster?
The foundation will be hard surface, either the asphalt or a concrete base.
Could I make a recommendation that you do cement? Because I've had a privilege of working with dumpsters and that, and when you put it on asphalt, it breaks up rather easily with the removal and resetting, moving back and forth and that. And so for a long-lasting and a more productive thing, I think concrete would be a better base for that instead of your asphalt.
Yeah, I'm unsure of the exact material. But yeah, I will definitely take your comments into consideration when we submit for this.
Because I've had a couple people call and ask that, make sure that it was a good foundation and not something that would crumble. And asphalt will.
Okay, then yeah, we will definitely take a look at making sure it's concrete.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Mr. Evans? Other questions? Sir, let me start out with a comment. I want to echo Mr. Evans' concern. I also have heard from a resident of that area who expressed some concern about whether there would be any leaching from the dumpster into the aquifer and the groundwater. And I also told her that I would raise the issue with you. I appreciate the answers that you gave to Mr. Evans' question, but I guess I would reiterate his concern, whatever is, you know, feasible economically and that can be done. And I appreciated Mrs. Volker's question to clarify why this dumpster is being located so close to one of the main arterial entryways to the city of Mishawaka. And I accept your answer at face value. But since we're making a move that is somewhat to placate the trash hauler, my hope would be that you would really emphasize environmental concerns with regard to this dumpster. But then again, a restaurant use is not some noxious use that's going to be dumping chemicals in there. That's a fair point. So, but anything that you could do to make sure that that's buttoned up, I also would appreciate. And then a second concern that was raised, and I believe that this is adequately addressed already in the design and in the staff report, but can you touch real briefly on what, any measures that will be in place to prevent loose trash from blowing around in the wind in the parking lot and into the adjoining neighborhood?
Well, the dumpster itself will be closed and have a lid on it. The enclosure will have, it's completely solid all the way around in brick, as well as a really nice cedar gate on the front. And it's completely enclosed. It's not cheap materials, and it won't deteriorate over time. And that should help ensure that the trash stay in the receptacle area.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. Any other questions?
I do, Mr. President, if I may?
Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt, for your presentation. Just a couple of quick questions regarding the proposal. One, how often does Bar Louis plan to have waste removed from that location of dumpster? Is it weekly, bi-weekly?
I'm not sure of that answer, but I could find out for you, but let you know at a later date.
Okay, because my concern is with Bar Louis, with the potential of being very busy and generating a lot of trash, that it would bring up the point that Mr. Hicksonbaugh had mentioned, overflow, trash debris flying out would be my concern. Second question is, has Great Lakes or Mr. Ram's received any pushback from local residents regarding this location?
I have heard of no opposition to this amendment.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, if there is anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine to zero.
Privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Hearing no one, then we will move into unfinished business, of which there is none, new business. And we have a standing item on the agenda for an update from the administration with regard to COVID-19 related matters. I'm not sure, I haven't scrolled over to see if, oh, it appears that Mayor Wood is on the call. Good evening, Mr. Wood.
Mr. President, do you read me?
Yes, we do, thank you. Sorry for the technological problems at our last meeting.
Well, I tied the knot better between the two soup cans. We should be ready to go.
Excellent, good move.
So, so yes, as far as updates, there's really not much to update. We're pretty status quo. Our staff is healthy. We're fully supplied and doing well.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mayor Wood? Mr. Compton?
Thank you, Mr. Wood, or Mayor Wood. I appreciate that. Are you receiving or have there been any complaints to the city now that, you know, we've been in this mask mandate for a couple of months now, or month or so? Are there any complaints from the city about businesses that are complying, things like that?
We do occasionally get some tattletale calls. We forward those over to the health department.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions for Mayor Wood? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business to come before the council?
President?
Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you very much. Our plan is to have a twin branch neighborhood watch meeting, more than likely via Zoom, that will be on September 16th at 7:00 PM. Still working on speaker. I just wanted to get that notice out there to the public, and details will follow.
Thank you. Other new business. Mr. Compton?
Mr. Mamalenti, would you send around the details of that meeting to the other members of the council, please?
I will, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other new business? If not, then a motion to adjourn is in order. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.